Good morning, Council. I'd like to call to order the Osage Minerals Council Regular Meeting Friday, May 6, 2002. We are now starting. We'd like to have an opening prayer this morning. We have some items we need to take care of in prayer for us. With that, I'd like to call upon Councilman Redcorn to give us an opening prayer this morning.
Before I pray, I wanted to bring our concern to two of our Gistomai. And that's our good councilperson, Susan Forman, who lost her brother. And then, which is also our co-councilman, the Gistomai, Paul Revar. And our hearts go out to their family and their loss. It's a very tough time. You know, that word "Gisto," you know, it's a big word. When you wear that on your patch, or have a patch on your heart, it's all the Osage people acknowledge that, you know. So, we just want to remember them in prayer, wish them well. And we have a gentleman here, Chairman.
Yes, sir.
He's going to run for the mineral council. We want to wish him well. His name's Justin Patterson.
Yes, sir.
And, you know, I'm an Osage Army veteran, and I always acknowledge, Justin's grandfather was killed in World War II. And that family had to survive past that without their grandfather coming home. So, we just want to acknowledge that, appreciate your brother, best of luck on your election, you know, however it comes out.
Thank you.
You know, our hearts are to your whole family. You had to be raised without your grandfather. And that's a high, high honor and an honest service. It's so good to see you here, sir. So, I'm going to pray now.
Wait, we don't.
Revar family, call on, Susan Forman family, call on. That you blessed them, Lord, that you watch over them. Take that sorrow, that heavy heart. That we want that for them. (speaking in Osage) Justin Patterson, call on, his family, his children, his sister. All those were descendants of one of our Osages that were killed in World War II. What's such a high honor that they deserve their names to be known. Robert Wood.
Oh.
That we always remember and cherish those things as Osages. And we're just thankful for the dedication and the sacrifice. That we make good decisions. (speaking in Osage) That you gave us this beautiful gift, Lord, of mineral estate reservation. (speaking in Osage) All these things we ask.
Amen. Like, take just a moment, the consideration that we've went into. We talk a lot about this council. We talk a lot about the losses that we have encountered. The folks that we recognize today are part of us. Each one of us who's put away our siblings know that that heart's hurt. And our hearts and prayers are going out to each and every one. And Jim will be missed. Also acknowledging brother, grandfather. Mine was Walter Macon. And I don't see how I could ever be here without you. And I just wanted to tell you, and all of the folks that are interested into this effort to take care of their people, the best of everything. With that, I'd like to go into a road call, please. Thank you, brother. That was wonderful.
Councilwoman Gray? Here. Councilwoman Harland?
Here.
Councilwoman Redcorn?
Here.
Second Chair Reddickel?
Here.
Councilman Revar? Chairman Waller?
Present.
We have a forum.
Thank you. I do need to add a couple of items I want to discuss before we get into the new business. I have a email that's going to be sent to us. I received it yesterday. It came over the Okeechobee gas system. We have an effort there where some of the Osages have been delivered gas in this system. And I believe they got a letter that said they didn't want to cease doing that. My dearest Paul, yes. We're going to look at the email, also get in with the Bureau of Indian Affairs. I've talked to our geologist to review it, so we have the parameters of what we're speaking about. And I will keep the council updated on that situation. I have another email that has come up, and it will be taken care of by the Bureau of Indian Affairs. It was from the Sayha Corporation. They are putting a 3D seismic project that we approved, and they have run into a landowner who's not going to allow them on. So, they are directed back to Mr. Richard Winlock, Deputy Superintendent, and that he will take care of this matter. Then, once he returns his effort, then we will update the council at that time. The last situation that I'm looking at is, is there any other effort that we need to look at? I have one item that we need to go into executive for, and it's personnel, and it's over a effort that I received from the United States Government I want to make the council all aware of. I received it two days ago. That's what this call is about. So, if I have to, I'll take a break in a moment. Second Chair can operate the meeting. Is there anything that any of the council would like to add at this time? Councilwoman Gray, please.
Yes, thank you. Under 4D, I've got Ted C. Grant, but I also believe that Councilman Redcorn may have one too. So, I just want to add that on that line. So, I'll do mine, then he can do his.
Second Chair. Yes.
Yeah.
Thank you, ma'am. And keep us in order when it comes to that time. The next item, is there any other request from my council? With that, I'd like to move down to new business. Osage Prairie Resources LLC, easement. Ditten Collier. Is Mr. Collier available? Sir, if you wouldn't mind, just stand from there.
All right. Probably needs to come that way. Do we have an extra mic?
Let's attempt it and see if we can hear. Mr. Collier?
Thank you, gentlemen. This is the first time I've ever appeared before, here before, so. Myself, I'm a sole member of LLC, Osage Prairie Resources. Myself and E.W. Carter have entered to purchase, to sell again, to purchase various leases from David Coast. Of those particular leases, there were several that David had not produced in quite some time. Those particular ones were not approved due to non-production. However, one of the leases is identified as the Wildhorse 1-5. There are three quarter sections associated with that. That particular lease does not have an approved disposal well. And David had an adjacent lease called East Gasmaker that did have an EPA-approved disposal well, which he was transporting via flow line to that particular well. The East Gasmaker was one of the quarter sections which the assignment was denied due to non-production. So, that is a single well that is non-producer there and a disposal well. Our request is to allow us to continue using that disposal well for disposing, because it would be vital for the economics of the Wildhorse 1-5 to continue. And along with that letter, whenever the assignment was denied, there were minimum royalties that were outstanding at that point in time. We have, E.W. and I have gone ahead and paid those, even though it would have been under David Coast's responsibility. However, we went ahead and paid those in an effort to show our good faith and effort to retain that, not necessarily the quarter section, but obtain the right, or obtain the right, to receive an easement to that disposal well. We have also applied to the EPA to have the name transferred from David into Osage Prairie Resources and E.W. Carter, and that has been approved. And we have a letter from the EPA granting that name change and responsibility also.
Through our UIC program here at the nation?
Yes.
Perfect.
Yes.
Please continue.
And that concludes my information I have to submit to you for my request.
Open the floor up to the councils. Are there any questions? Brother, you'll almost have to go off of yours. My computer crashed. But, Second Chair, please.
Is that the, this maker number one, is that the injection well you're talking about?
Yes, it is. The Gasmaker number one is the injection well. There is an additional well more on that, that quarter section, and it will need to be plugged out, you know, by David. And my father is the other 50% owner of that particular lease, so David and HR will be responsible for plugging that out. It is under David's bond. But the bond, as far as E.W. and myself, I'm acting as operator on various leases that we purchased, but operating under E.W.'s bond. So, he's the less E.
Yes, sir.
And that's correct with us. Second Chair, do you have anything you'd like to add? Counsel, I'd open the floor up. Any other questions?
Chairman, I have my hand raised.
Yes, Councilman Revar.
Thank you, Chairman. Mr. Collier, I appreciate you being here. I'm just having trouble. I mean, I can hear loud enough, but I'm just having trouble making, there's some of the conversation I was missing. My understanding that you're needing the use of a disposal well that's been permitted by the EPA, that's on another lease, that you do not have under lease, and there is no exist, is there an existing lease where this disposal well is? Is it under a current lease with somebody else?
It was with, under David Coast, and he, that was part of the package that he attempted to sell to me and E.W. Carter. However, BIA did not approve that assignment due to non-production.
Okay. So, the lease is going to be terminated? It's not terminated yet?
Correct.
Okay. And you're interested in paying an easement on that well regardless of what happens to the status of the lease?
That is correct.
Have you spoken with the people in it yet?
I have not. I spoke with Kami Kennedy is who I initially, because that was who the letter saying that the assignment was not going to be approved. And so, I first spoke with her, and she instructed, I was asking for options, and she gave me what my various options were, one of those being the easement. After reviewing with E.W. Carter and the pumper, Wayne Wood, you know, thought our option would be whether we wanted to try and attempt to make an effort to obtain the full quarter section or not. And based upon the status of the well that was on there, it was not in our interest. Our only interest was in retaining access to disposing in this, in this BIA, I mean, EPA-approved disposal well. So, that's why the easement was the best option for us, and that's why, she instructed us that to obtain an easement would be to submit a request before the Minerals Council. So, I have never submitted a letter requesting approval through the superintendent. My effort, this has been my first effort and the only effort to obtain this easement, and it was through the Minerals Council and not through the superintendent.
Just to be able to begin familiar with the property, who's, who's, who's going to, the assignment was going to be from the current operator, which is David Coast?
Correct.
Who was he assigning it to?
To myself and E.W. Carter. So, Osage Prairie Resources and E.W. Carter Oil Company, Inc.
Okay, so, you, you and Mr. Carter are, do you, do you still want to pursue a lease on that track when it is terminated?
No, sir, we do not. Based upon discussion with David and the pumper, that that particular well is a depleted gas well, and just do not see really any, you know, economic viability to try and retain that well or produce it. There's just really nothing David knew of that was in other formations or anything that was really worth pursuing. So, we want to allow he and the other working in for sure to go ahead and proceed with plugging that well.
So, Chairman Waller, here's what it might take on this. The lease is not terminated yet, it's in the process of being terminated. Mr. Collier and Mr. Carter, I guess, are not interested in leasing the property, but they do want the, an easement on the disposal well, like we've done in the past with other disposal wells. And he is, you know, addressing the right body that would, that would issue an easement under certain terms. And so, I, the way I see it, I think that if we were to grant them an easement for that saltwater disposal well, which would be the benefit of the headline owners, for them to produce their production from an offset lease, so I'm in favor of granting an easement under the terms we typically do. But I think, I think that what we'll also need to do is probably instruct you, Chairman Waller, to write a letter to the superintendent and ask that she not demand that well be plugged. Because what she will do when she terminates that lease is she'll, she'll demand that the current less E, which I understand is Mr. Patterson, he'll receive a letter demanding that all wells be plugged and flipped and removed, and that the standard language that goes with the lease termination. So, I think that if we're going to grant an easement, that we would need to assure the superintendent not to demand that well due to the reason that we are granting an easement. So, both to do that in this meeting. Thank you, Chairman.
Yes, Councilman Redcorn and Councilwoman Gray.
I, Chair, I make the motion that we accept this easement offer on this circular location.
Second.
May I just address one item in, as regards?
Now be the time.
Okay. As regard, in your statement about instructing the superintendent, you know, to not, as far as plugging out that quarter section, what was interesting about the letter, whenever it was sent to us, denying the assignment, was that it said, you know, that Jeff McGuire visited the site and only identified one well to be plugged, one G. He failed to identify the disposal well. I didn't know if because it's a disposal well and it falls under BIA, it was some other different reason for why that was not included. But however, in the, in the letter denying the approval of the assignment, it only referenced the one non-producer, and it failed to even mention the disposal well in that particular letter. So, as far as your concerns about, you know, the superintendent identifying what needs to be plugged out, it actually was not even, that disposal well was not even identified in our letter to us.
If the responsibility of the current less E, the well more is, I think that if we vote to grant the easement according to Councilman Redcorn's motion, I just think that we should send that resolution to the superintendent. And this is something that the council will be doing, that the Chairman Waller would send the resolution over to the superintendent stating that we have granted an easement on this well, and that we request that, that the well not be plugged. If I'm not mistaken, Chairman, does the superintendent approve our easement?
They'll sign off on them after they've reviewed the UIC program's information. Councilman Redcorn.
Did Rob Phillips instruct you on your path you're presenting to the Mineral Council?
Uh, Kami Kennedy, contact. I, I call for the vote. I need to ask Councilwoman Gray, is there any other comments you'd like to make before we call?
No, I, I think it was clarified with Councilman Revar and Redcorn. I'm good to go with the vote.
Call for the question, please.
Councilwoman Gray? Yes. Councilwoman Harland?
Yeah.
Councilman Redcorn?
Yes.
Second Chair Reddickel?
Yes.
Councilman Revar?
Can I ask one, one more question?
Yes, sir, go ahead.
I just, you know, maybe, maybe it was stated, and I just didn't hear it because I was having audio trouble, but we are voting to grant an easement on that disposal well. Did we talk about what terms, like an annual fee? Typically, there's an annual fee involved, and I, I know what we've done in the past, but I don't recall hearing the easement being subject to an annual fee.
When you permit it to the federal government, they are going to ask that you retain an X amount of dollars to keep the easement. I believe it's 300, if I'm not correct. But this motion will only go through after they articulate and sign off for that requirement anyway.
You're approving on their terms.
Exactly. The motion will get you there.
And you anticipate it being 300 or annual basis of what you anticipate?
I will anticipate it, but I cannot give you.
Guarantee, sure.
That, that will be their call.
Yes.
And with that, counsel, finish up. Thank you.
Councilman Revar? Chairman Waller?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you. Take all the information over. The resolution will be prepared to take over to the BIA. We might be able to get it out to Sydney, but in any case, the resolution will stand. They will, of course, you will go to the Bureau of Indian Affairs, and they will give you the outline of the actual easement. Thank you very much. Thank you for the production. We appreciate that. As the chair, Councilman had mentioned, along with us, thank you.
Like I said, we have spoken to a couple of people, it's the first time I've been here in 20 some years since this mural was presented many years ago, so it's good to see that again.
Is your, is your father in that mural?
My father is in that mural.
Oh, okay. Great. Thank you.
And he was a very, very good man. There's a lot of people we buried out there on that, and we buried three of those council members before we even finished our talk.
Yeah, I looked through, I have a frame of that, and behind that, the pamphlet that was the ceremony that day was behind there, and I read that this past week after I moved up here. Very interesting, so.
Thank you. It's been an honor. Ladies and gentlemen, I'd like to move on down the agenda item. I have an election report from Mrs. Billy Ponca. My dear, if you would, floor is yours.
Does she need the mic? Her voice is so loud.
Chairman, could I, I just want to bring to your attention that I've got a text from somebody saying that our meeting's not being livestreamed. Is that something that we could ask our staff to do?
Yes, sir, and we'll have to review that because my laptop's already went down twice.
It's got to be IC because we have it from here. It says recording, and it says streaming on our.
Yes, sir. Here in the chambers, it is showing it's recording and streaming, and that will also, I did get a text this morning, is that it will be, it should be streaming, sir, at this time.
Can you call over?
Yes. We will have that checked on at this moment. Mrs. Ponca, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
I took a different company, so they're pretty rampant this morning.
They are.
The floor is yours.
Thank you, sir. I have submitted the summary for April, which I think is very easy for you to understand what we did during the office. There has been two major problems. One of them was that the balloting company postage on some of the ballots that was not adequate. I had sent them emails. I talked to him in person, not in person, but on the telephone, and I repeatedly said, "Do not put postage on these ballots or return ballots." He assured me there would not be any postage, and there was. So, I called him. I went down to the post office, and I told him, "Do not send anything back. We will cover what needs to be covered." And then, I have had a phone call on it, and here's what I told him. I said, "Here's your choices. You can send it back as is. We will cover the postage. Or you can take it to your postmaster and ask him how much more you need to add to it and send it." They were not happy with those suggestions that I gave, but that's the only thing that I did to tell them. The post office is very much aware of it and assures me nothing will be sent back.
That's encouraging news in this kind of dilemma.
Awful. Now, the next thing is, we had sent the balloting company a picture through the internet showing how the names were to be on the ballot and with the number that the candidates are. I found out yesterday that they took the numbers off. The names are in the right order, but there is no numbers 1 through 15 on them.
What did you recommend?
Well, here's the only thing that, here's the two things I've thought of since last night. We can either just leave it as it is, and everybody will have the same type of ballot, or I can call them today, and I can stop whatever they haven't sent out and have the numbers put on. I don't know how much confusion that will make as to the people that like to look for problems and like to contest it. They can say, "Well, the first ballots didn't have the numbers on them, and these other ballots do have the numbers on them." So, it's just a matter, actually, to be quite truthful.
I think this is wrong.
Battery's going down.
Actually, I don't know which would be the more problem, having them go out all alike and everybody get the same kind of ballot with the same kind of information, or call them today and stop whatever they're doing with what we've sent in and add, and add the numbers. Either way, I think it's going to create problems. So, if I can ask for a suggestion from the council, I would definitely appreciate it.
Would you like to hear this at this time? Counsel, do we have any discussion on this?
I've got, Judge, I think she's.
Councilwoman Harland?
I recommend leaving the ballots the way that they are. If you start changing the ballots by going back and putting numbers on it, that's going to raise issues with folks who are going to complain and say, say, you know, "We started changing the ballots midstream, the numbers, you know, the names are all on there, and they're in the correct order." The names, as long as all the names are on there, that's the most important thing. If, you know, I know that there's individuals who are counting and saying, "Well, you know, I'm not." I'm number whatever, six on the ballot," whoever that is. You know, folks are smart enough to count down, six people. Is that you, Margo?
Yes.
That was great, sir.
Thank you. I know, I was kidding.
But I recommend just leaving the ballots as they are because when you start changing things, then there's room for disgruntled persons to say, you know, "We manipulated the ballot in the middle, it is what it is." As long as the names are all on there and they are in the proper order, which is what really told us, then I think we just leave it as is and go with it. I think the mailing issue is unfortunate, but, you know, we don't have any control over it. It sounds like Billy's staff has done everything they need to do, they've made arrangements with the Puska Post Office, we're going to get a lot of calls on that, we've already received an email about it, although I suspect it was written by a council member. I think that we need to just be ready to answer that and everybody give the consistent answer that, you know, it's not going to be sent back, you can add postage to it, or, you know, send it and the minerals council will pick up the remaining postage. So those are my recommendations.
Do you have any comment, counsel? I don't believe I could be answered any better than what we just heard from Councilwoman Harland. I concur with that. At any time that we have run into a discrepancy, it's too late. We sent a ballot out, everyone's going to get the same one. I know it's a little controversy to maybe to the people running, but I think for our voter, it gives them their opportunity to give them the greatest right of all, and that's vote.
That's correct, sir.
I have no problems about covering any kind of cost. You and I actually added some dollars, and that was, I always liked it during the projects I did for the nation. You can always run into something. This contractor has put us in this position, there is no changing that. So with the council's approval, I like to go with my recommendations as a council that Councilwoman Harland has just given, and we will make that our public address. Or I think a press release might be in order, if you think so, but I think on our end, that's how we will approach it.
Thank you, sir.
Is there anything else you would like to add?
Not at this time unless you have questions from me.
I'm really glad, thank you. This will work itself out.
Yes, I think it will also.
And I think also is that you will be able to review that election day and also identify this item that's coming in as the voter's ballot.
Yes, I'd like to thank Councilwoman Harland for her recommendation, and I totally agree.
Thank you, ma'am.
Councilwoman Harland, I have a question.
Yes, Councilwoman Rebar.
Yeah, thank you. I'd like to ask this, why are we getting sent out absentee ballot requests this year?
We actually have never sent out absentee ballot requests in with our mailing. We've always sent out our notice, and in the notice, it gives the information on how to request an absentee ballot. That is something that hopefully in the future, the council will go through all of these rules and regulations and make changes.
Well, the reason I say that is because I do know that we did in 2018, send out application for absentee ballots.
Not out of our office, we did not.
Yes, we did. And you are mistaken, I have a copy of one, that's how I got my ballot last night.
I don't...
I completed an application for an absentee ballot, and I mailed it in, and then I received an absentee ballot, and then I voted.
Well, I have no record of that in my office, and there are people that will put absentee ballot requests out, but they are not from this office.
Well, that's how I got mine in 2018. I wonder why we didn't do it this year, like we did in 2018.
Well, one of the reasons why I, it doesn't require us to do that, but on the mailing of the sendouts, that had almost doubled, and it would have doubled more had I created an absentee ballot request form and sent that out. And again, that's not in our rules and regulations to do so.
That's all I have, chairman, thank you.
Thank you. With that, we'll go with that recommendation.
All right, thank you, sir.
Councilors, are there any other questions? Thank you for your report, thank you for your hard work.
You're welcome.
And we appreciate it.
Well, I appreciate you all too, and thank you.
You fine with everything? We're good, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
I'd like to move on down the next agenda item. I'd like to go into the gravel for our pipe yard and rainbow yard. I'd like to have Mr. Byrd get up and speak to us about that.
Okay.
Mr. Byrd.
First of all, I'd like to thank all the members of the mineral council, an opportunity to reach out and contact some contractors in regards to the rainbow yard on reclamation and getting that yard prepared for us to our best benefits. And I did contact four different contractors. The first, that was Jean and Herb Paris, company name Good Old Boys, reached out to them, they come in, done a site inspection, and then I also reached out to Robbie and Brandon Rowell. They also as well come out and looked at the location, and we talked about that. And then there was two more companies, Howells Well Service, come out and looked at the location as well. And then the fourth one was Builders Unlimited, they were the company that come in and done the demolition of the old existing foundations and buildings and stuff, and they showed some interest as well that they'd like to have an opportunity to put a bid in on this job as well. And two of them, two of the companies voluntarily had dropped out due to the complexity of the construction and equipment that would be needed to do that. It's going to take a large amount of rock to fulfill the yards, and I had all the companies prepare, with the exception of the two that I just spoke of, two different estimates on the bids. One is for a partial yard reclamation, and the second one is for a full yard reclamation. And the price is varying, of course, it's got some fiber material, material fill that's debatable on whether or not you'd want to go that route. And what it consists of is taking a dozer and excavator and cutting the grade back from the west part, southwest part of the property to the northwest part of the property, from the west back to the east, central east, back to the northeast corner. There's a steep grade running off in there, and that would have to be, cut a grade back in there to get it squared back up where we could put some material down. We was talking about a twelve inch ag base with a six inch base, road base, rock base in the bottom, and then come back in with an inch and a half screenings or something on top of that. And then, like I said, the material as the barrier would be debatable. And so anyway, we received two estimates, actually four altogether on split partial yards or full yards. One of them, I think, come in, of course, I've got the bid sheet prepared, and I'd like to pass them amongst all the council members here present, as well as the administration staff and stuff. Oh, here we go. And then for the council people that's not here, they'll have the opportunity to look them over as well. And the highest bid is just shy of eighty-five thousand dollars for a total reclamation of the full yard from Builders Unlimited. And the cheapest bill that I've seen submitted was probably around seventy-six thousand dollars for full reclamation of the yards from Howells Well Service. And then from Builders Unlimited, I think they've been running around fifty-six thousand for a partial yard. And Howells Well Service was coming in around forty-eight thousand dollars. The numbers are right there, available for everybody to look at. And like I said, what it would base of is coming in, by the way, on the northwest gates, there's two gates that you enter that property that's dragging the ground and is very hard to get through, you can without picking them up and toting them back. You practically need to cut that grade down, rehang them two gates to get them back up off the ground, about eight inches ground clearance where them gates can swing in. Access to the southwest end has got two gates, it's in good shape. And so with that being said, that's the minor part of the dressing up the yard lot. But like I said, it will have to be dug down, put back the grade with a slight slope back off to the east, it's a natural drain off to the east, and then put your ag base in on the bottom, and then come back and do some compaction, and then come back in and do another layer on the top. And that's what we're looking at right now. Things are not cheap on yard reclamation stuff. Forty years ago, back when we built yard deals, we could get by with ten, twenty thousand dollars, and it killed us. I mean, it really hurt back then, and nowadays, we're looking at it with the cost of the materials has gone up, the fuel's gone up, the type of equipment we're going to need to get in there and do the reclamation, it all adds up and stuff. But I would like to reach out to all the contractors that took their time and to come out, and ones that would love to have been there to participate in this, as well as the ones that are still existing and stuff. Do I have any questions from any of the council members?
Councilman, I have a question.
Yes, Councilwoman Rebar and Councilman Redcorn.
Thank you, chairman. If I'm not mistaken, this, you know, this yard was purchased in the name of the nation for the well plugging program for the mineral council to have a yard to store salvageable equipment, and also, I guess, to use to sort all of the equipment coming in off of wells that we plug, to determine what's salvageable and what to be used in the future, what needs to be scrapped out. So that was kind of the original purpose of this yard. We purchased it in the name of the nation, we used well plugging funds to purchase it. We bought pipe racks for the yard, and we bought them in Arkansas, but we don't, we, the Osage Nation Self-Governance Office won't allow us to use our well plugging funds to have the pipe racks delivered to our yard. So that's another issue, but at some point, it'd be nice to have our pipe racks moved to this yard after it's dressed up and usable. My question is, since this is owned by the nation, is this expense to finish it out basically, or it's usable? Is that a nation expense, or is that going to be an expense that is going to depend on us using our remaining funds for the well plugging program to do this work? So where, what funds would we use to do this work is my question. Thank you.
Okay, that is entirely up to the council, how they want to spread the butter on this. I would have no say-so in it. If we do not do anything to it, it's going to wind up being a, pretty much a salvage yard, basically. But yes, we've got an awful lot of equipment scattered out in loner yards, and when I say loner yards, that's the generosity and the courtesy of people that we've done business with in the past are allowing us to use and store our equipment in their yards, and that has been going on for quite some time now. So I do see there's a dire need of maintaining this yard, making some improvements, getting it available where we can get our equipment back in there, bring it back home, and be recognized that we are here to stay and we are a player for the mineral council and the shareholders, that we need to show good cause of our assets that we have reclaimed and any intentions on in the future.
Chairman, my question was for you, do you know what funds that we've used to do this work?
Yes, sir. We're going to have to look at maintaining the costs within the Osage Minerals Council. We're either going to have to look at residual C-39 funds or go into the S-510 for this effort alone. The other consideration, and that's what we have contacted Osage Nation's procurement, is that when self-governance says we can't use something, we're asking the nation, well, how do we trigger the other payment that can come back in from the actual sales of the salvage area? Those are the questions at hand to complete that answer. I have not heard back from the nation. I was asking that maybe we can bring it back to S-510 if we have sales of the set equipment, but also to encumber the cost to which we're talking about today. Councilwoman Gray.
I think my concerns are similar to what Councilwoman Rebar's are, is that, you know, who's the responsible party? And I will have to say, I will have to look at how, even though we needed the officer or the chief to bind that land acquisition, but it was on for our behalf. So I think there's some joint responsibility that we have there, and like you said, we have some S-510 funds, but does this need to go through procurement? Even though, I can't thank you enough for going through the due diligence of looking at those bids.
Sure.
And, but sometimes we have to follow the procurement, but if this might work, then I'm good with that too. It's almost like when you do something partially, then go back and redo it, it's, I mean, look how much rain we had, and they've already experienced erosion on the pipe yard that we just cleaned up. The other part of the pipe yard, even if they use the geotextile down there, it'll prohibit some additional growth. We're going to do it right, and if you do it right the first time, then we don't have to go back. And I just want to say thank you for the work that you've looked at doing this. Chairman, not that, I know that we need to have a decision made on this, but if we could take this information, get some of these questions answered...
Yes, ma'am.
And then look at the S-510 budget, find out what the responsibility, if the nation can share in the cost, yes or no, then we'll find out, if not, we'll bear the cost of it. But I would rather, I would really like to see the rainbow yard be done right, and with, you know, adjusting the gates to the height, to making sure that it's not, and it's so funny that every now and then, I'll just drive around and look at the projects that we have going on, and I run into, I run into Councilmember Red Eagle as well, but, you know, just to keep up and look. So, second chair, I appreciate you taking this effort on as well. But I'm not saying no, I'm just saying, can we find out a few more questions, and then can we put this on our next agenda and maybe, and during that time? But if you guys are ready to go with it, but I just want to make sure we follow procedure and we know that we have the money looking at these bids, or do we have to go through procurement? I mean, there's just some questions.
Sure.
I'm for getting this done, I'm just for getting it done.
The right way.
The right way.
Absolutely. Congressman Woman Gray, I agree with what you're saying and what you have just spoken in regards to, yes, that we're all in this together, team player. If we could find some assistance to accommodate the mineral council and the shareholders as well, that would be great, the benefit of all of us. And, you know, you're always going to get criticism, you spend a ton of money. Well, you know, it is a great, big, huge investment, but you look at it this way, if you spend a minimal amount of money and then you do a partial job, and they say, "Well, look what we got for our money, we've got so much tied up in it now, we maybe should have thought about looking at another yard that was already ready to go for us." That's out of the question. We can make this a very desirable location.
That would have been a...
Yes, yes. Yes, yes. And the Osage Nation, the mineral council, the shareholders, we should have nothing but the best. And...
Chairman, may I add one more thing? You know, one of the things that we, we've been working on is asking for additional funding for this, um, for our well plugging and, um, and especially over the abandoned wells. And as our crews have been going out and finding, um, you know, viable equipment, we don't wanna put it somewhere like just sitting on dirt and then it just, it'll just, you know, rest.
Go back to mother, it's a matter of time.
Yeah.
I know you leave this, it stores better downhill than it ever did on the ground or on a pipe rack.
Yeah.
And it requires continuous maintenance, even on, off the ground and off, on the racks and stuff.
So just, just to add to that, so I can, uh, wrap here, is that I believe that if we just do, just do some, um, find, get some questions answered, then we come back, we do this because then our story continues to be told when we, we talk to the federal government as we ask for additional funds from Congress, um, uh, other state programs, uh, the, the monies that said, look, not only have we done this, but we created our own pipe yard. We've got our rainbow yard and it is top-notch. So we can add that to our story, but I just wanna make sure we get it right and have these questions answered.
And, you know...
Chairman, and that's all I have.
Excuse me, Chairman. Yes, all the material that we have been going through with, uh, you know, it, it, it does have a shelf life. Sooner or later, it will be of little, no value reclaim what we can.
Back to Stu Matando, I'm gonna take the floor and they give it second chair.
Can I make a point here?
Yes, Councilman Redcorn.
I have my hand up.
Yes, you do.
Keep getting pushed back. So just a comment, go ahead, sorry, thank you. Panel is recognized. I'm gonna get some call.
Yes, sir. Second Chair, Red Eagle.
Uh, just looking at the estimates, uh, Builders Unlimited, that looks like the best bet to me.
You, do you think so?
I believe so.
They're gonna come in a little bit high, uh, but you know, the quality of work is, is good as well. Uh, like I said, I have had the experience of working with both contractors before. I know, uh, the Howe, uh, Oilfield Services, that family has done an extensive amount of work with the senior housing hall, dirty in and out and the rock and stuff like that, as well as the Osage Nation, as well as, uh, working out in the field on the oil and gas wells.
Well, I noticed the, uh, Howe well service is doing a pool yard with well over a hundred thousand. And Builders Unlimited on the pool yard is sixty-eight plus another sixteen thousand.
Yeah, sixty-eight on that and then...
That's, that's a part of making western.
Yeah. I, I think, um, I think sixty-six thousand plus an additional twelve thousand plus for the Howe, uh, bid and then sixty-six thousand plus sixteen thousand. I think there's probably about seven thousand. I'd have to go back through and look at it again. I think there's around seven thousand dollars difference from, from the Builders Unlimited, uh, bid to the Howe bid right there. And both suggested the same type of, uh, reclamation to fix that yard up and stuff.
Chairman, I don't wanna go in front of you.
You're not. Councilman Redcorn.
Thank you. Uh... I've heard a lot of discussion on this. First of all, I'm like you guys, Mr. Patterson back there, we got Homer holding on there. You guys are moving out there, moving quick, doing well, getting these locations plugged and cleaned up. This is something I think we can hang our hat on as a whole mineral group. Uh, the way I see it, we need somewhere now to put this equipment.
I do. When do we ever stop with storing and racking? And, and like I said, uh, yes, it's a, it would be great if we could move forward as soon as possible.
Study this problem. I don't know, uh, is Candy Thomas okay with these upgrades?
I'm not for sure. I haven't had no communication, uh, Councilman Redcorn about that. Uh, I know we've been staring this situation down for an extremely long time, uh, ever since we first purchased it. And prior to that, we knew sooner or later...
This, this money's coming out of the well plugging.
No, not that I'm aware of.
Okay, so clear there.
Okay.
So this is all us and we're gonna have to pay, you're asking us to pay for this upgrade?
I, I would say so. That would be for the mineral council, the shareholders to, uh, get on board with this and stuff. Now, if it's like Congresswoman Gray's first...
Is Bill in, is all, is Bill in involved in any of these decisions or geology?
My, it's my understanding he is not.
Okay. So this is something you, Mr. Red Eagle and David are asking us?
Yeah.
Okay. I just, I just need to know where we are.
Yeah.
But that's clear. So with that, I think I agree with Ms., uh, Gray. We need to find out everything before we move.
How much money we got enough?
We got enough, do we have enough? I'm for this.
Yes, absolutely.
We need to do it, but we don't wanna trip up and do something wrong.
Right.
It's all federal money, it's all shareholder money. We just need to ask some more questions and make sure our steps are in line with federal law and then we'll move forward.
Sure.
And I think we can do that in two weeks.
By the next year.
Hell, hell, well, excuse me, hell, well, sir, is this a cheaper estimate?
That's good.
The builder, Builders Unlimited is already familiar with the yard.
I'm glad to hear that. You guys, I'm with you. Let's do that. Let's make sure all these steps are good. Justin Patterson, can I say?
Yes.
He asked me if he could ask a question. It's my time.
Yes, yes, I can. Mr. Patterson.
Yeah, what I'm, uh, wondering is, we're gonna have to have this backyard sooner than later because the places that we're storing, there one of us out.
I can't hear you. You don't have a mic?
Can you hear me, Mr. Rebar?
No.
We, uh, need to start getting the yard ready and get our stuff moved in because these people are making us move off these yards that we're storing it at. And I don't know if we're charging for it or not. And I think it's out of kindness of their hearts to let us store it. But they're needing room in their yards for their equipment. And I don't wanna hurry none. Now, if I remember right, at the rainbow yard when I was a kid, where those two big propane tanks used to sit where the concrete was, that was all gravel at one time. There should be a base there.
Well, there is on the west side, Justin. On the east side, I've seen no sign of any rock ever been in there.
I'm talking about where them two big tanks sit on the east side. All the way to the northeast corner, there used to be gravel in there.
It may have been, I can't see any sign of any there, they went in there.
Grass has grown up.
It sure did. And then the back field has come in on top of it, there's no doubt about it.
I know. There's a base there.
I can guarantee it's two inches or two foot, Justin, so...
Well, we get a shovel out and dig it and see if there is.
We've had extra...
Can y'all do that and just tell us, you're asking, Mr. Patterson, if we need to grab it or not, right?
Yeah, but I don't know about how much gravel. If there's a base already there...
Can y'all get out there and do, just do, I'll go with you. And then Mr. Red Eagle on the twentieth, we'll be ready and prepared for this break and ask all her questions with Congress or whomever on the nation and how we're gonna pay for this going forward. And then twentieth, we, we sit out on the side.
What I'm saying is if there's a base there, we don't need near as much gravel.
Here you go. We get out there. That's very valuable if we get in and do some reclamation and find out that there is some good foundation to it.
That would be great. That would benefit if nobody...
Did your bidders not even go on, on site and look at that?
They did.
Well, then that's why they recommended you, uh, oh.
I'm gonna...
They have text up.
Uh, Councilwoman Gray, I've hold an awful lot of equipment in my, my time. And when I take any equipment in there, if I don't have a foundation, I'll start. If, if the weather bad and we gotta move, we can't get in there.
Well, another question.
Between now and the twentieth, we can decide if that, we agree with the wrong amount.
Let's see what kinda bases are there because I'm not mistaken, there used to be gravel poured there.
We say, yeah, we think you don't need this much. Give us a new quote for how much we think you need.
Now, another question is...
There, there is, there is, you guys, there's a half yard and there's a pool yard. Now, we could go, just like you say, we could go with the less amount we have.
Yes, sir.
I, we have it.
Sure, might be glad if we could go to the lesser amount.
Yeah.
But what, another question I have is, the pipe and the units that we're getting off these leases, do we really need to hang on to them or can we sell them?
I'm ready to just...
My, here's my experience with the nation. We cannot grab material and give it to one person. If I have to do that, I gotta give every Osage pipe.
Yes, sir.
So we gotta give fair process somehow, auction, auction would be a great way.
Yes, sir.
Auction that pipe off, it goes to the highest bidder.
The question is, does the money come back to the minerals council?
To this operation.
Yes, sir.
That, I love that answer.
Yes, sir.
Even if we have to bring it, but I do have to go back, I unloaded a lot of Crown Central pipe for a lot of pipe yards. The compaction's gonna have to be at over ninety-seven percent. That was bobtails going in there. We're bringing in low boys. And, uh, I think that, uh, the consideration, but I love this idea of, you're correct, we do need to get that. I've actually reviewed the items. Something else I just want for our constituents, lot of talk, I understand the pricing, but when we get that pipe that we wanna keep, the price of it's gonna be stagnant.
Gentlemen, that pipe is at the roof right now.
Exactly. Chairman, yes, excuse me.
That one comment.
Oh, my.
You know, if we're gonna table this, I would suggest that we don't table it for very long, just like Mr. Patterson said, uh, there, there's people out there who are storing pipe on their property and they're getting, they're, they're one that often...
They're gonna gotta charge on this.
So we need to, we need to move on this.
Two weeks. I'm gonna make a motion.
And then the long air, I would say.
I make a motion that we, uh, table this issue until we get our answers or just do some due diligence.
Review of the contract and cost.
I make the motion that we table it till...
Eighteenth.
May eighteenth. And bring it back up in.
Second. Second, I have a motion on the floor by Councilman Gray, seconded by Councilman Redcorn. Call for the question, please.
Councilwoman Gray? Yes. Councilwoman Harlan. Council... Councilman Redcorn?
Yes.
Second Chair, Red Eagle?
Yes.
Councilman Rebar? Chairman Waller?
Yes.
Motion passed this.
Thank you, gentlemen, for both the comments.
Thank y'all.
And clarity. Appreciate it.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
The same answer is gonna take care of the next problem of when we do the sale.
Sure.
And we, we, he is correct. I, I was thinking, maybe we can go on site, auction it off, and we have someone who'll purchase it there.
They can, you know, uh, Chairman Waller, there'd been, uh, people would actually purchase it out on the field to save some, uh, transportation costs and stuff and, uh, uh, there's a lot of different ways to skin that, that rack and stuff, so...
Thank you. Thank you, Council. With that, I'd like to move on down to agenda item. Uh, the other effort is that I do have a comment from Councilwoman Harlan. I think we do need a news release to entertain the issues at the election. Uh, so I'm gonna commit to that this afternoon and with her help, we'll get it out to Osage Nation News as clarity and it will be exactly her remarks. The next is the T E D C grant, Councilwoman Gray.
Yes, thank you. Um, we got word after we submitted, um, very proud of O M C four, we submitted five grants, uh, under the E M D P grants. But, um, there was an opportunity that was a two and a half week window if you have any other grants. Um, and it's unusual that they did the same timeframe for T E D C at the same time they did the other grants. Usually they're staggered. So we were able to, uh, we had applied to do, uh, a grant, oh gosh, I would say in two thousand nineteen, on getting monies to assist on, um, providing codes and structure for, uh, tribal business. So I dusted that off and got the permission to, um, um, apply for this grant. And all we're needing is the, um, um, you know, from the grants department, they said, yeah, if you can get it in, just get us a resolution and, and then we can get it resubmitted or just updating it and making it, um, look a little bit shinier than the last one. So I'd like to read my resolution in. The Osage Minerals Council was elected to carry out the business of the Osage Mineral State and believes it to be in the best interest of said estate and headright holders to support the protection and maintenance of property designated as restricted for the benefit of Osage people. And the Osage Mineral Council supports the planning and development of a energy-related tribal business that promotes sound energy resources development and management. The Osage Minerals Council has specific interest in developing the Osage Mineral State for profitability and sustenance of those same shareholders and therefore be it resolved, the Osage Minerals Council hereby authorizes the submission of the tribal energy development capacity grant for the Osage Nation in coordination with the Osage Minerals Council. The Osage Mineral Council hereby approves the submission of a T E D C grant application to D M D slash B I A titled, "Osage Sovereignty Codes for Development of Energy and Minerals Management and Operating Companies," and authorizes the Osage Minerals Council chair to execute, deliver all documents. That is mine.
Yes, Council, yes, Councilwoman, I'd like to entertain a second to the motion.
I second.
I have a second on the floor by Councilman Redcorn. Any other discussion? No, not at this time. Chairman Waller, call for the question. Councilman Rebar?
Redcorn's second.
I have trouble understanding, uh, the chambers. What, the resolution is to study the feasibility of, of remaining and operating companies? Is that what it is?
Uh, uh, Councilman Rebar, um, this is the same grant we submitted about three years ago to help develop, help develop, uh, the laws, codes and, um, uh, business structures. I know that we are, um, but this will, uh, uh, give us some money to continue these efforts. So, um, I know that right now we're paying it out of our budget. If we're able to get this grant, we'll be able to have some additional grant funds to look at, um, continuing these, um, we know what we're spending on these codes and stuff right now, so this will bring additional money in.
Is that, is, is studying, uh, our infrastructure, like roads, utilities, pipelines?
Um, well, it, it, well, what it is, yes, absolutely. It's for everything. It's just to, um, uh, look at the business structure that we've all been talking about for, you know, several years now. But this is a grant to, to give us some money to do that.
Now you're talking about business, I, I thought you said infrastructure.
No.
No. Do you have it in, you, you have it in board book? I, you're breaking up. I can't hear you.
I'm gonna open that board book and see if I can't read it because I can't understand what's going on in the chamber.
Next thing. Yeah.
I'll read this to you again. The Osage Minerals Council hereby approves the submission of a T E D C grant to D E M D titled, "Osage Sovereignty Codes for Development of Energy and Minerals Management and Operating Companies." It's a grant to do that. Okay.
Thank you, Council.
Can we call for the question?
Yes. Sure, we're gonna call for the question.
If someone, you guys, if people can't hear, can you guys, please? If someone, you guys, if the people can't hear, can you guys, please?
Call for the question, please.
Councilwoman Redcorn?
Yes.
Second Chair Red Eagle?
Yes.
Councilwoman Rebar? Chairman Waller?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gray?
Yes.
Councilwoman Harlan?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Council, I'm gonna sign instantly, because we're ready to go on this resolution.
Chairman, if I may?
If you will, please. Councilman Redcorn?
Tailing on what Mr. Gray asked at the beginning of the meeting, I'm also request that the mineral council approve the resolution for me, for myself and our group, which I say group, I work with our geologists. And I'm gonna submit. A grant application. And I've already talked to Candy Thomas about two months ago if we could do this. We just did run out of time. However, now that the deadline's been extended, I'm gonna ask, I wanna make a motion that we submit a grant application to D E M D dash E M D P to investigate oil recovery using improved oil recovery methods.
Yes, Councilman, as a motion, and I have a second. I have a motion on floor by Councilman Redcorn, seconded by Councilwoman Gray. Is that on my board bucket? Well, I don't have a computer in West. I'm gonna go with you. With that, any questions from the council? Hearing none, call for the question, please.
Councilwoman Redcorn?
Yes.
Second Chair Red Eagle?
Yes.
Councilwoman Rebar? Councilwoman Rebar?
Three times only.
Councilwoman Rebar? Chairman Waller?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gray?
Yes.
Councilwoman Harlan?
Uh, Councilwoman Rebar was on mute. I don't know if he knew it, but he was on mute. It's already passed.
No, he needs to read it.
Okay. The resolution is.
I can reread it.
That's all I did. I gave you. Did he give you one?
The, the resolution is to investigate oil recovery using improved oil recovery methods. And this grant application will go to D E M D dash E M D P. It's, it's called not enhanced. We've already been granted that.
Yes.
This one is for what we call improved oil recovery methods.
Thank you, Council. Thank you, Councilman Redcorn. I actually had the email that you sent me that actually had this on there. I just can't get it drawn up, but I'm all for it. Is there any other questions from our council?
No, we've already voted on that.
Well, I'm just correcting you. Is there any other? With that being said, now you give the criteria to vote that it has passed.
Motion passed.
Yes, I'm wanting for her clarity on recording.
Motion passed.
Thank you very much. We will move on down to the item E. There will be a report on the trip to Denver. Councilwoman Gray?
Thank you. It looks like I left my notes on, oh, no, you're there. Okay. Last meeting, we, I put in a request to travel for the launching of the Intertribal Energy Consortium. And I just wanted to report out that it was well worth driving my war pony real hard up to Denver because it was an incredible meeting. Just to give you some of the names of the, off of my meeting notes. As you know, I had explained several months ago to be, that I was requested to be a part of this group. The Hickory Apache Blackhawk Energy Corporation, in connection with Cota Holdings, have applied for an E D A grant through Commerce to look at the formation of this. And this grant runs through two thousand twenty-three. So, what it is, is probably something twenty, thirty years ago that only tribal leaders could dream about, is that there was a consortium, and we were at a table similar to like we are in this room, but it was made up of all the tribal energy company CEOs from Blackhawk, Red Willow, Southern Youth Growth Fund, three affiliated, Wind River, the Shoshones, Navajo Nation, and, and some other tribal leaders that were in the room. So, like we had Mike Davis with Hickorya, Greg Adell, he's a oil and gas attorney. James McClure, he's with Navajo Nation. Travis Taylor, he's with three, United, Southern U. Shane Seibel, he's the executive director of the Southern Youth Growth Fund. Mark Fox, chairman of the three affiliated tribes. Some attorneys, David Williams, CEO, with M H A Nations, Missouri River Resources. John Washeke, Eastern Shoshone. Myself, Tom Schiff, Ships. He's a lawyer with, I think we all know Tom in Indian Country. He's been a, he's the one who set up, been legal for Southern Youth. So, just some of the meeting notes is that they're, what is this organization gonna look like? But Chairman Fox got on the phone, and he's wanting the tribal leaders to also join with this group. So, there's, there'll be some uniting and a blend of both organizations. The reason being is that tribal leaders, just like how we're, we're here. We may be here another four years, or we may not. But the group itself has the consistency of, of carrying on that organization. So, that's what they're looking at. Their, the next meeting is in Houston. The Southern U is going to be able to do a tour. They're talking about showing their office in Houston, which consists of, they're, I mean, they're already doing offshore. They have rigs out in Gulf of Mexi, yeah, Gulf. So, it's a, it, I'll tell you, it was really nice to sit at. Business-minded people doing energy in Indian Country with oil and gas. And then, you know, that the potential that Osage one day will, will have our company there one day. We can see it. So, I just wanna tell you, thank you for supporting me in these efforts. And I, I got our meeting notes, and I, they're in our Govinda. I think they should be uploaded. If you don't see them, just refresh. They kinda did went through a, I think we're gonna go through a squad analysis next, how this will look, how they're gonna form, whether it's a five oh one C three, C six, C four. But there was some, the brain power and being at the billion-dollar roundtable there was really something to see. And collectively, really pushing policy in Washington, D.C., where they can be advocating not only, not only for energy in Indian Country, but also, they're also looking at new forms of energy as well. Hydrogen, C O two sequestration, all these different technologies, innovative. Because we always talk about being innovative, and Councilwoman Redcorn, you just got talking about, you know, the I O R, improved. Those are the technologies that they're already doing. They were talking about the use of drones now that can go over areas and can see what's in the ground. I mean, the technology is there. We just never have had access to it. It's so, and they would like one time in the future that Osage be the host. Hickorya was the host, and we were in Denver, which was kinda where everyone could go to. And so, these will be, over the next months, will be part Zoom, part in, in person. So, I just wanted to just let you know, that's where we're at on that organization. So, and I supplied the notes for that. So, that's, that's my report, Chairman.
Yes, ma'am. And that is that over the T E C group?
No, this is, this is a.
Name it, please.
And they haven't really got set on a, you know, they're running two titles right now. The Intertribal Energy Consortium, or also Intertribal Energy Alliance, they haven't, it's not, they're looking at. They got a bunch of attorneys who.
That's why I'm not, not here. Okay, thank you, dear, for clarity for our chair.
Yeah.
Any questions? Councilman Redcorn?
I, I don't have so much a question as a comment. I wanted to say that, first of all, thank you for your efforts to go up there and, and keep the Osage conversation going nationally. Sounds like to me, this ain't a government-sponsored deal. This is more of an independent group coming together, seeing the need, and taking the first action to get this thing moving. That's admirable. One thing I wanna say is, a few years ago, I went and heard a talk from Southern U. They showcased their success. On the panel was the chairman of the U tribe, the regional representative of the Bureau of Indian Affairs, and the governor of Colorado. All sitting there, three of them, talking about the success of the U in energy development. I'm afraid we're challenged here. Can we have Chairman Waller sitting down with the governor of Oklahoma and our B I A superintendent, who isn't here, sitting at a table, talking about the success of the Osage in, in development? So, I think we're really, really challenged as opposed to our neighbors. Just a comment.
That's a great, that's a great comment. And you know what? One of the things that Shane Seibel had shared with us, and as is Navajo Nation, when you start something like this, it's not easy. And they, they said, you know, we, but, but we're here as a resource to you. If you wanna say, hey, how did you get through, you know, this situation? It's almost like having another board of directors to say, hey, we've been in that tight spot. We know the way out. And that was very gracious of them to say, we wanna see Osage to be successful.
You hear the commentary from our current governor.
Oh, yeah.
On his feelings on tribal sovereignty.
Oh, I'm, I'm.
And we're facing, here, I'll say this. Indians, Native Americans as a whole, we own fifteen percent of the resources, but only eight percent of the population in Oklahoma. So, therefore, I say we own more real estate than the standard Oklahoma. We should be like Kuwait. We should be like the Emirates, the, the, the country south of Saudi Arabia. I'm sorry, I forgot. Yeah, United Arab, UAE.
Yep.
We got a lot of resources as a Native American. And it seems like politically, we're feeding a lot of people on our own. And we gotta change that conversation. I'm glad you're there, so they could see the challenges of Oklahoma politically. We're, we're moving forward. Maybe Southern U just took the charge, and then all of a sudden, the governor liked it, the B I A liked it. That's why they're all sitting at a table. Maybe that's where we gotta go. When they finally see how everybody can benefit, when a native nation drives an energy development into thing. And we have a huge resource here. Huge. I went to Houston, went to the Carbon Capture Utilization and Storage Conference. I realized that they're battling to get co, carbon capture buried, and they're paying for it by carbon capture only. Not the Osage, we've got the added benefit of recovery to add on top of that profit, which puts us way ahead of the game. This is the future of energy development, and all these majors are getting on the bus to start managing carbon. Carbon capture is part of their portfolio. I get the oil and gas journey, and all these companies, Exxon, all these big companies are starting to put a big plan together, and there's a lot of federal money. So, I think we need to jump on the, jump on as, as you're doing, go to the front, and try to get this, get that conversation going. We're gonna take control of our own asset. We're gonna be the, the power in our northeast Oklahoma because of our resources. So, applaud your effort. Glad we got a team down here. We're getting ready to hear some of our, some of the stuff that's going on. But I think we need to keep going. Keep going, because these people are gonna tell us no. We gotta tell them, yes, we can do this. We can, we can start owning these things, moving forward with these things, and grabbing a lot more resources, money, feed our children, our grandchildren. This is a lot of resource. So, thank, thank you for that effort. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Chair. That's all I got.
I had one closing comment when you called me for there and updated. I wanna give a shout out to Mr. McDonald, former president that acknowledged him in the years. I'll go ahead and tell you, I was with him on SERP in the early nineties. And it was with Mr. McDonald, actually, our chief was their attorney. And I went with Ed Red Eagle and George Talk Chief. How could I been in a better class of group? And I wanted to acknowledge that, and thank you for your participation, and let's see what we can do.
Okay. Thank you.
I do wanna give a shout out to Joe Salt, one of my buddies, and Alfred Yawze. Life's too short, and I've acknowledged two great men that I've worked with from the Navajo Nation. I hope their families are all doing well. Thank you. The last comment, you brought up a great point of the situation I might wanna talk about, and I'll just wanna discuss it with my council. And I don't see it on here. We have received an invite to go down to the state of Oklahoma under the Corporation Commissions. This is Virginia.
Hudson Singer or something, yeah.
Yes. Do we need a resolution to go down there?
I don't think it would hurt. I mean.
Yeah?
Yeah.
Which, and also, they called me, and I said, I'd like to attend virtually because I have some other dates inclusive down at our prime date that week. But in any case, I would like to have the opportunity for any council.
We have the other one from OU as well, so.
Yes.
Yeah, I would like for Chairman to talk on our behalf at the O C C.
Yes, sir. They actually have left me an email to allow me to participate.
Okay.
So, I won't, I'll just call in and go from there. I won't travel. That's what the resolution would act.
Oh, okay.
I mean, as we do that, you recognize our Osages that are on this plugging committee. I submitted the information to this lady saying, we're ahead of the game. We've already assessed a lot of orphaned wells. We're already out there plugging wells. We're trying to get a place to, but they're quit.
Yeah.
We're way ahead of state Oklahoma. We're way ahead of a lot of people, probably one of the first group moving, number one. I don't know, but.
No, we are, sir.
Are we number one?
For sure.
So, we need to say, and I did put in there, we've already done all this, this and that. Blessed by the United States. This is all tribal and the United States. Now, we're looking for more money than just plug wells. That's where we are. We're ahead of the game. No planning, no this, no that. We've already got everything established. That's just what I wanna say, Chairman, if you can remember.
Actually, I wanna use your email as my catalyst.
Okay, thank you, Chair.
No, I'm just calling in.
I just want to have, I just want to echo a, a comment is that when the states receive their formula for requesting for funding for orphan wells. They have a caveat in there that says they have to use disadvantaged businesses. Also, they have to work with tribes. So that's that outreach. I'm glad that's in there. So just, we look forward to hearing something back on that, so.
May I give you a short update?
When you get back there.
And I knew you'd say that. So I already called the state of Oklahoma, Ron Affair, the Indian Affairs Commission representative from the state of Oklahoma. And I'll tell them that we're coming and that we would like to have this information. Also, and be inclusive on the other items, not only in this, but you've already talked about it in open meetings. So I think we should talk about it now. Every aspect of the EOR program, the IE program now, and any other function availability. But the first thing I think we need to discuss with them, not only that's, we have the first project ever that's been taken care of by a tribe. We had the bureau, we used to plug wells, but never funding directly from the nation. So again, as you well know, I have consideration with some of our attorney that we are writing for the necessity of the 1,600 wells.
Right.
And that's all I want to say. That's just, I think it's instrumental in us giving that contact information. The next item is we are going to have to look at somehow, we are going to be identified without the state. We just, we're federal. And I think that once we have that recognition. I used to sit on Oklahoma Tribal Advisory Board and you had a front row seat to get involved with the governor. We don't have that, but I think this will be a great time.
I think this is the, this is it.
And with the organizations and information the grants are applying for. With that, I have a time and effort to really thank you, Mrs. Red Eagle, for your patience. I'd like to ask you to please take the floor and give us the report on the Great Oil and Gas Summit. And the hard work I cannot go unanswered. I want to thank you on behalf of my counsel.
Thank you.
I still have those black glasses on from my surgeries, but I haven't heard nothing but great responses.
Well, I'll start with that. We have 101.
You might use that mic because they can't hear you.
I don't even think it's on anymore.
Thirty.
It's just not booming now.
Here, it's on, it's on.
I just want to say that we, for the oil and gas summit, I worked with Councilwoman Margot starting in January. And we ended up having 101 attendees for the
The most that you ever had?
No, it's not the most. Two years ago, we had 114.
Congress would have been on session.
But it was a really good conference, thanks to Councilman Redcorn. We got a lot of new people, a lot of new companies that showed up from your trip to Texas. So, and we already have, I've been getting phone calls after phone calls from brand new companies that arrived. We have Trihydro, they want to be our next sponsor and they want a summit next month. And I tell them, hold on, hold on. So thanks to, thanks to Councilman Redcorn, we got a, we got at least five new companies that, that showed up. That's never even been to our casino before. I, I try to be on budget, but it was really hard working with the tribe to get them to have credit card charges. We did the last time, but they can't do it this time. I didn't find out until the day before the summit started. So we have a lot of expenses that haven't come in yet, a lot of payment. But the good thing of it is with Councilman Redcorn's help, we got OSU involved. And now we're a vendor of theirs because they can pay with credit card, they have to pay with a check. So I've been working with them, with the tribe to become a vendor and we should be getting about 2,500 from them within today or Monday. And another thing is with them, with Dr. Puckett. He wants, he's setting up something with me and I'm going to be working with the tribe. And they are going to do a week long camp on geoscience for, just for our Osage kids for free. And that, I just heard this, I've been working with them for the past two weeks. And, and so through this, I'm thinking that maybe we can work a, maybe a scholarship. I talked to the chief about this and, and get some more of our kids. I'm working with Margot's niece, Mary with education and to get some scholarship funds started through OSU. So, so this is, so thank you, Mr. Redcorn, for, for doing this. This is just going to benefit all of us. But I have all my voices out, yes.
You have a direct contact with the STEM and STEAM programs?
Yes.
That everyone's, I talked to someone yesterday of the same matter. And they will go to the nation and look for any kind of addition that we can have brought in.
Isn't that great?
I was wanting to talk to second chair, maybe we can expand with Dianca Scholarship in this endeavor.
That's what I was thinking too.
Thank you. That's all I had.
Yes. And so this is just the future for our kids and our future shareholders from our families. So does the chief. And that, that will be in July. So I'll be, I'll be giving you all information, all the coun- all the council members information when I get information about this. Then maybe we get
Does education know about all this?
That's where I'm going to get with Mary with education.
Okay.
And let them get the, get the word out. And I'm going to get the word out to our kids. Yeah. And it's, and they're doing it for us for free, Dr. Puckett. And he's been speakers at, at other events that we've had for oil and gas summit. So he's really involved. And so I had to order more food because we end up getting more people to eat. So that's why our budget went a little bit over, but it, it, it's all going to come together.
And that was my consideration. We still got a couple of weeks before we can answer that bottom line. But for the cost, it's already been a home run. Everybody's still cheering. So we'll get, we'll get there.
Yeah, and just for the record, that this, all the money that was raised for sponsorship, so the money that was in the bank downtown. We never touched that 12,000 at all, correct? Yeah, 12,300, that money was never touched. We raised all in sponsorship, so.
Good job.
And we got future sponsorships.
Yeah, we got future, we've already said that the, we want to go back to having the regular one in the fall. And when we made that announcement, it was, everybody's on board. And I, I did get to mention this and I'll mention this right now is that when I was up in Denver and before I left, I had lunch with my cousin, or breakfast with my cousin. And it was in Lakewood and I just called Janelle and said, hey, can I come over and see your offices? I ended up having a three hour, just a great conversation with them. And they said, we want you to know the next summit, we can participate. We, their travel ban has been lifted. And they said, I know that we had Matt, Dwayne Matt did on our aggregate. And he did an excellent presentation. So they said that they would be, they want to come in and participate and also maybe do some breakout. So we may move it to two, two days, you know? Or two and a half or whatever, but I think we have enough content and I think people like the format. It kept it going. It was informed. We should put a few more breaks in there because we, we were going hard, one after another.
I know.
Yeah.
I'm not going to say it. I'm not going to say it.
We did, I mean. But it also gives time for people to go out and visit our, our booths. And that, and it gives them time and, and actually we should probably have our receptions out there where the booths are, maybe. We can change it up, but Christie, I guess it was a pleasure to work with you. We, I enjoyed my time and, you know, anytime we ran into just a bump in the road, we just talked and we just kept going on. And, and every single one of our speakers showed up. We had no one not show up, which is really great. And the, they love the sponsorship gifts. The best was a big hit. And Mr. Carter, E.W. Carter, he was, and his family were very pleased. And I, I just, just walked away with a good feeling and, and it felt like we were easing back into normals. You know, something normal again. And so to me, I think we should already be looking at potential dates. And continue to thank Osage casinos for their support and, and all of our sponsors, actually.
I'm going to be sending out a thank you note
Oh, okay.
To our sponsors and the ones that have been calling me. They really loved Dwayne Matt and Dr. Knapp's presentations.
Oh, nice.
They, this one that I'm getting the most.
Good.
I was like, man, that was great.
She's, I think she's really excited. They, Dr. Barbara Hill from Schlumberger, I met her in Houston. She's so upset she wasn't able to make it, but she's very wanting to be here. So, and then she's got a whole team on, you know, they work together. So with Dr. Knapp, Dr. Puckett, who's worked with us a lot in the years. So I think this is some really good connections. And then you got the education element, you know, children involved. I, I'm excited.
I'm excited too.
This is great. So good, great work.
Thank you.
For two and a half months. I was
And that's, we, we and Mr. Redcorn did it in, we did it when we did that sky too. We did it in like in two weeks.
Yeah.
So.
We had one day or anything else. Yeah.
So it's, it's possible. We all get to be there.
That's a good
Thank you.
Counsel, any other questions?
No, I think we're good.
I think we'll just get, if you can, just email Lacy the update on any of the bottom line.
Okay, that's fine. Yeah, I can do weekly.
Just to, just to confirm the $12,000 that's in the budget for the summit is not touched.
Not touched.
Thank you. And we've been, and we've been adding on to it.
And you've been adding.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, dear. We would like to move on down to the next item. And I believe it's important to the young lady who just tapped out. Councilwoman Gray paid me to do Christie.
Yes. Part of the agreement of having Ms. Redigal, she's done this every year. Done a great job and she does it for such a, you know, it's really a labor love, but we do compensate her. So I make the motion that we pay Christie Redigal, as agreed upon, $5,000 for her services.
I need a second, please. I'll second that. Thank you, sir. I have a motion on four by Councilwoman Gray, seconded by Councilman Redcorn. Any discussion? Check for me. With not hearing none, I'd like to call for a question.
Second Chair Redigal.
I have a thing to do to family and relationship.
Councilman Rebar. Chairman Waller.
Yes.
Councilwoman Gray, yes. Councilwoman Harlan. Councilman Redcorn.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. I just have one other comment, just in the effort in which you have just talked about. And then Councilman Redcorn's talking about Dr. Knapp and the other elements. I'm seeing something else is that we are also looking at the University of Oklahoma coming in. We've had the University of Tulsa come in and look at a project. We might need to get over and have a mini summit with the council and those three entities only.
That would be great.
You talked about the Emirates, University of Tulsa's professors, their attorney. For BNP. So I think we'll get, you know, we'll, we'll have some efforts that could help us. Just, just to keep that on your thought.
Yes.
I'm, I'm wanting to hit the council up since we get to the dances. Let's get them together.
Yeah, information is key.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Good job, volleyball, dude.
Do you want, do you want to take a motion to go into executive and take a short break?
Yeah, let's do that. I need to
I, I need a motion.
I make the motion, we go into executive decision.
Second, I have a motion on four, Councilwoman Gray, seconded by Second Chair Redigal, to go into executive. Any discussion? Hearing none, call for the question.
Councilman Rebar. Chairman Waller.
Yes.
Councilwoman Gray, yes. Councilwoman Harlan.
Yes.
Councilman Redcorn.
Yes.
Second Chair Redigal.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you, ma'am.